Marcus, Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Smith.
Here.
Mayor Chairman Paris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
I'll move you excuse Councilwoman Marcus.
I'll second that.
Let's do it orally. All in favor, aye.
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 No opposition. The invocation today is Reverend Maxine Schlitz, Schilts, I'm sorry. I'm sorry about that. Sometimes I think I'm dyslexic from the Revealing Truth Church.
It's done frequently, it's no problem. Right, if you'd like to close your eyes and know that the Spirit, the great Creator, the source of love and abundance, and whatever you choose to call that, universal source, is right here and right now, operating and around and through everybody here at the council meeting with the council itself, and guiding everyone to bring order and the greatest benefit for all concerned, for the citizens of Lancaster to fruition. We're grateful for that presence, we're grateful for that guidance, and we commit ourselves to listening to that guidance from within. Thank you, and amen.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, will you place your right hand over your heart? Ready, begin.
Our pleasure begins to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The consent calendar consists of items of routine business for which minimal or no discussion or special presentation is contemplated or required. These items may be acted upon as a whole with one motion, a second, and a single vote. We will begin a new process this evening. Thereby, if you desire to speak on an item or items on the consent calendar, you may fill out one speaker card for the consent calendar. You will be given three minutes to address your concerns before council takes action on the consent calendar. If you want additional time, you can request it, and we will decide at that time whether or not it is warranted. All speaker cards must be filled out and submitted prior to the consent calendar being called. This same rule applies if you wish to speak on other items on the agenda and non-agendaized items at the end of the meeting. Following this process will allow us to conduct a timely and orderly meeting. Thank you. And there, well, you don't have an agency calendar, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, good.
Other than the minutes.
All right, we do have the minutes. City Manager, did you want to discuss that?
Yes, I'd like to give a report on M2. I don't know if you want to take M1 first or not.
I want you to take M2 first.
Thank you, Mayor Paris, and City Council members. The amended minutes under M2 do require some comment. As you will see from a video clip I'm about to show from the March 22, 2011 meeting, the minutes do accurately reflect the discussion and the actions of the agency board at that time. However, the minutes did not reflect the specific properties identified at that time by the three board members who recused themselves from the vote. Those are the properties that are reflected in the amended minutes. I'm going to show a short video clip, a minute and a half, and then explain why this has come up at this time. Kelvin, if you could show that, please.
Mr. McKeon, do I have a conflict? I have the McMahon's Building and I have the J and 10.
It's a citywide program. I think, you know, maybe out of an abundance of caution, it wouldn't hurt to have you disqualify yourself for this approval process. Then we'll review it in more detail on a subsequent date.
Okay, I'm going to yield to the Vice Mayor, and I'll leave the room. Thank you.
I have a question, too, because I have property, two properties, on, from 15th Street to 10th Street.
Do you have any properties in the district?
Yeah. I lease a space at 15th West, but I don't own the property, and I would only think the conflict would take place, in my eyes, as if I tried to apply for the, and, you know, as of, since I've been a city councilman.
Mr. McKeon.
I think this is something we need to go into a little more depth.
Okay.
And I think there are a lot of potential benefits from approving the program, even if you don't necessarily participate in it. I think, Mr. Chris, do you have commercial building? Well, the same concept, and I think if we now would have three members who have disqualified themselves, we need to apply the rule of necessity.
That's what I was going to add.
Thank you. The rest of it just shows the rule of necessity. A complaint, I believe it was anonymous, has been filed regarding the acquisition of the old McMahon's Building by the mayor's law firm for expansion of their business. As you can see from the clip, the mayor did publicly disclose that at that time. Additionally, the mayor did discuss this with the city attorney and myself when he was contemplating the acquisition. We advised him at that time he could go forward under redevelopment law because it was an expansion of his business. That advice may not have been entirely accurate. We still believe it is, the acquisition is allowed under the law. That opinion is at least debatable. I'll ask Dave to discuss in a moment. We have had precedent on Lancaster Council of a similar situation where a city council member resigned his position as member of the agency board because his family acquired or opened a business on the boulevard some years back. I'd like to have Dave make a couple comments on this, and those are the reasons we've amended the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I think as we've discussed, there is a provision in the redevelopment law that restricts acquisition of property by agency members within the project area. But there are some exceptions to that rule, and one of those is to enter as a business owner, or to participate as a business owner, in the project area, and also re-enter in business if you'd owned a substantially similar interest in the project area for at least three years. The other requirement is that if you do own property within the project area, that you must disclose that on the record in writing. And we've done some research on the concept of what is a writing, and, you see, there's some pretty broad definitions of writing in the government code, which would be applicable here. And that would include a recording, similar to the one that we've just viewed. That would constitute a writing for purposes of government code, and I think for purposes of the redevelopment law. So I think that provision has been complied with. Now, with respect to, if, as a matter of just prudence, if you choose to resign from the redevelopment agency, then that is specifically provided for in the statute. Any member of the legislative body, which means the city council, and that would include the mayor, they can opt to resign from participation on the redevelopment agency board. They would still remain on the city council, and in that event, you would then, the city council would then appoint a replacement. So if that was going to happen, we'd have to put that on a subsequent agenda for future action.
All right, that is going to happen. At this time, I'm going to resign from the redevelopment agency. At the next meeting, we will appoint my replacement and a chairman at that time. Because I have resigned, I don't need to leave the room, I don't need to recuse myself, I'm just not part of the agency anymore.
That's correct.
And so if you guys want to amend the minutes, I would suggest you do that, and then we'll move on with the city council for today's meeting. Vice Mayor, why don't you go ahead and yield that issue?
That's for the, we'll amend the minutes as currently stated, and so do I hear a motion on M2?
As so moved.
Second. Call for a vote. It's unanimous with the board now currently comprised. Do I hear a motion for M1 or any discussion?
A motion to approve M1.
I second that.
Call for a vote. Unanimous.
I'm going to close the meeting.
And we'll close the redevelopment agency meeting and open up the council meeting.
And I'm back, isn't that magical? Does the council have any items on the consent calendar they want to remove?
I don't have anything.
And we have, with your new policy, three speakers for the consent calendar.
Anyone else? Does the staff have any items they want to remove?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Michael Reeves?
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm a little confused about the new procedure on the consent. Do we fill one card out for the whole calendar, or we still fill individual cards out?
One for the whole calendar, and you can speak on any item you want, okay? Or multiple items?
I mean, I can just talk about multiple different items?
That's correct.
Okay. The first item I want to speak about is the CC3, the Ward of Public Works Construction Project 11-01. This is $3,136,102 for 40 miles of resurfacing the streets of Lancaster. And that comes out to be $78,402.55 per mile, and this is a foot calendar, $1,484 a foot. And I'm wondering what streets are going to be paved, and when is it going to commence, and what kind of competitive bidding to place in that. By the way, the construction firm is based in Valencia, you know, it's not a local vendor. And also, I'd like to know if the, in this $3,136,102, does that include the painting of the lines in the street, or is that just the paving? I also would like to talk about CC4, 5, 6, and 7, the Community Facilities District. City wants to assess the homeowners $330 a year to work on the different facilities in the city. And I noticed that single-family dwellings are charged $330, the multiple-family zone properties are $330, commercial zone properties are $330, and undeveloped properties are $330. And I'm wondering why, why the, there's not a difference between the single-family dwellings and the multiple dwellings and the commercial dwellings, as far as assessments? An assessment like this is a tax. You're taxing us $330 a year, or $27.50 a month. Right now, Californians work 106 days to pay taxes. After this is passed, we'll be working 107 days.
Go ahead on the other item. Yeah, go ahead on the other item.
CC8 has to do with $143,932.90 that's going to be paid to a Santa Clarita, Santa Clarita-based construction firm for a bus stop. And this firm, R.C. Becker, had to pay a penalty in March 16, 2010, because they failed to check their trucks to make certain that state emissions standards were met. This is another outside vendor. One of the other things that, I'm going into the new business, so I guess I'll have to wait to the new business.
Have to wait for the new business. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Teresa Malone?
I also wanted to comment about CC3, the pavement management program. I'm neither for nor against it. I really don't care if you pave the streets or not. I just know that every time you fill the potholes, it rains. But anyway, has the Public Works Department investigated the possibility of using rubberized asphalt? If you add rubber crumb to an asphalt mixture, it will expand and contract with heat and cold. They've done experiments on national highways through Arizona and New Mexico that are still running that were started 30 years ago. It gets tires out of landfills, and it makes the street last longer. Yes, it costs a little bit more when you initially paved the street, but you don't have to go back and fill potholes because they don't happen, because the street just expands and contracts with the heat and the cold.
Robert? Will? Mark? I'll let Robert answer, I believe we do.
We do have a standard that includes rubberized asphalt on our arterials, secondary arterials. There's a lot of benefits to rubberized asphalt. We still get potholes in rubberized asphalt at times, depending on the situation, but...
Well, yeah, if you get a lightning strike, but how often does that happen in the middle of Lancaster?
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, I was in the Air Force in Florida, the flight line used to get craters in it.
Ms. Malone, he's answering your question, it's not a time for a discussion, okay? Thank you.
So it is our policy to use rubberized asphalt.
Okay, thank you.
And I had another comment. I don't know if anybody else felt it as badly as I did about a couple of nights ago. Before I went to bed, the air in this town was so foul that I started wheezing. I don't have respiratory problems. The only thing I have problems with is perfumes and colognes and other things that are in products or that people wear, and you know what? Put the bag over my face, I can walk past the crowd. But I was wheezing so bad, and when I fell asleep, I thought, oh, good, at least the wheezing will stop, or I won't be aware of it. I woke up three times that night because the air was still so foul. And the next day, I had to turn on my air filter for five hours.
Wait till the power plant's built.
My point exactly.
Thank you. David Gaheta? 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 We've got lots of cards here.
What does it say on the card, exactly? If there's lots of cards on it. Does it say G, or does it say my last name? Okay, so CC2, since you guys want to change the meetings now, I guess you don't like the way I come up here and ask the questions. And I can ask questions, Mr. Smith. I want to know why the Sagebrush Cafe has a bill for $20,000 for the L-Magnite out. You know, this is concerning the check register. That's an interesting invoice. I want to know why, or I've noticed we've paid out a lot, millions of dollars for these homes that we have for the redevelopment agency, or the revitalization commission that is through the LRA. And we've purchased over 100 homes, and you guys were purchasing more until Jerry Brown decided not to fund it anymore. And you've put in over a million dollars' worth of rehab to these homes, and I'm sure if Jerry Brown didn't put a stop to that, I'm sure you would acquire more real estate. I think, you know, since I came up last two weeks ago, I didn't agree with us buying property. And the reason why is because we have over 100 idle properties, so I would, you know, we're wasting money. And now, we're wasting money, having to spend over $11 million to keep the redevelopment agency going, which I don't believe we should do that. And the maintenance for it, just in 2010, was $54,000, going to Desert Havens Enterprises, and in 2011, it has a substantial jump, so as we acquire more properties. I think that, I see jazz bills, you know, for jazz orchestras and bands played, and the only place I've seen jazz performances is at Beck's. And you make it very apparent that there is jazz being played in the pictures you have on Facebook, where you're drinking. I wonder if the wine that you were drinking that night was paid for by the city, because we went to the Leona Valley Winery and spent $400 in wine. Maybe I can see you guys setting up a party, you know, if you trace back the track registry. So we're talking thousands of dollars in jazz bands, bowling lessons. I want to know who's doing bowling lessons. I know there's a bowling alley at Beck's. I know the mayor likes to bowl belly dancing lessons. Is Ms. Marquez doing belly dancing lessons? You know, I want to know, these things I want to know. Thank you. Care to comment?
Can you comment? Mr. Bozzi?
We've offered Mr. Gaheta the opportunity to meet with myself or Jason to discuss any concerns he has on the warrant register or anything else. He did have a meeting with Mr. Cottle, which he failed to show up for. And I spoke to him again today, and we're happy to meet with him at any time.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion?
Move to adopt the consent calendar as currently comprised.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. And it's unanimous. Moving on to public hearing item number one. Want a way of reading?
Yes.
Start the clock as soon as his name is called, please.
I knew you were going to do something like that. Well, this is something I actually didn't want to speak about, so, thank you.
Nicole Parsons, start the clock the moment their name is called, please.
You know, I just put in a card so that I can hear the staff report. Even in one and M2, I just put in a card to hear the staff report. But I almost came to put in something for MB3, because I don't agree with you guys giving us summaries of the ordinance. If you guys are going to make available to us, make available us the whole ordinance and the whole information upon request. Don't do that to, I reserve the rest of my time, thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Okay, is there a motion? Well, is there any discussion first? Is there a motion?
I'll move to adopt resolution number 11-60.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. Oh, I pressed the wrong button. Actually, I didn't, but let's try it again. Okay, maybe I did. All right, it's unanimous. Moving on to new business item number two. Are there any speaker cards? Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Powers agreement?
Yes, MB1. Okay, let's have a staff report.
Mayor Paris, City Council members, oftentimes we come up here before you complaining about the state for good reason. This is an opportunity for us, however, to partner with the state and advance a relationship that the city of Lancaster has had with the Antelope Valley Fairgrounds since the 1930s. Essentially, there's an opportunity based on legislation passed in 2010 to support and enhance the operations, maintenance, and facilities of the fairgrounds. It would allow us as a city and the fairground, the 50th Agricultural District, to form a joint powers agreement, which would then provide for direct local control over the fairgrounds, and the ability for the city with its resources, staffing, et cetera, to work with the fairgrounds with its expertise at putting on events and such, for the mutual benefit for both. In this era where all of our resources are strained, this is a perfect opportunity for local government and state-chartered fairgrounds to work together. The Department of Agriculture has approved this. I believe we have Fair Board Member Cecil Swetland here, and Danny Jacobs, the executive director. They have enthusiastically improved this, allowing us to go forward, and they look at this as a model for the rest of the state. So they're going to be watching what we do here, and we're going to do it very well. We're excited to present this to you, and I'm available for any questions, and I know Danny and Cecil would be as well. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Well, I, Councilman, Mr. Mayor, I'm not in favor of us getting involved in this commitment with the state. These are the same people that are going to send thousands of prisoners down to the state prison, and what they're trying to do is pawn off this fairgrounds authority to us, because we're going to be responsible for maintaining the facilities, improving the facilities, using our staff, and hopefully, we'll get our money back from the money that the fairgrounds generates. Another thing that's perplexing about this, the state wants to turn it over to us, but they're going to let a state assemblyman appoint one person to the board, they're going to let a state senator appoint one person to the board of directors, the mayor of Lancaster gets two, and I guess the board appoint one. You know, you either give it to us, or you don't give it to us. If the state wants to run it, fine. I wouldn't get involved in any commitment with the state. Their state is practically bankrupt, the country's practically bankrupt, and now we're tying ourselves in to this Antelope Valley Fairgrounds. If the state wants to run it, fine. If you're going to turn it over to us, turn it over to us completely and stay out of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole Parsons?
Okay, again, I just wanted to hear the staff report, thanks for the staff report. And, you know, hearing that, I just, the rodeo, that was not, I don't think that was cool, and that was fair for you guys to charge us citizens for the Fourth of July, and if anything, it should have been free for us. And you guys, I believe, owe us like a free rodeo, and then, and then charge, and then we'd all be enthused to see it and stuff, and that's just not fair.
Dan Jacobs?
Mayor Paris, City Council people, thank you for having me. There's so much I'd like to say, but I only have three minutes. So I would like to just state that the fairgrounds, although we are part of the state, we have nothing to do with prisoners being brought here. As you know, the state has many concerns about the financial stability all over the state, and with knowing that was coming, we worked with the senator last year, and Senator George Runner put forth SB 1085, which allowed us to do this. It didn't require us to do this, and we really pushed it. Knowing what was going to happen this year, we are actually the only fairgrounds that did this. AB 95 was passed earlier this year, which cut all funding to all 71 fairs in California. And so with that being said, we are also looking forward in that the state is divesting itself of fairs, probably within the next year or two. We recognize the contributions that the city of Lancaster has helped with the fairgrounds. We wouldn't be able to have moved eight years ago without the city's help. This is a great opportunity, not only for the city of Lancaster, but for the entire Antelope Valley. The local control will be brought back, like it was back in 1938, before the fairgrounds was donated to the state of California. Since then, we've had a lot of construction going on at the old fairgrounds, now we've moved. We're really looking forward to... We're really looking forward to progressing a lot more than we have under the state's oversight the last few years. So we're, we're hoping that you will vote yes on this, and we're looking forward to a great partnership with the city. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any discussion? Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move that we approve the joint powers agreement between the city of Lancaster and the 5th District Agricultural Association.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. Moving on to new business item two. I couldn't imagine him not filling one out.
PH1, but no MB1.
What about MB, what about M1?
Yeah, you were late. Okay, moving on. Mr. Mew.
Mayor and city council, I appreciate the opportunity to propose to you that the city continue with the building stimulus incentive program. There were 348 houses and 20 commercial industrial structures built during the past incentive program, resulting in $90 million worth of construction and hundreds of jobs. The 2011, 2012 building stimulus incentive program is targeted at existing approved tracts. We are proposing a 25% reduction in the city's imposed impact fees on these developments. On a typical house, a builder is required to pay a little over $11,000 in impact fees. In the targeted developments, there would be a $2,800 reduction in fees to encourage construction. $8,500 would still be collected by the city for impact fees. By doing this, we hope to see completion of neighborhoods, job creation, and reduction in vandalism that occurs in these types of areas where there's partially built structures, and thereby reducing the need for community resources such as police and fire services. We are also proposing a commercial industrial construction incentive by deferring the collection of impact fees from the permit issuance to the certificate of occupancy. For a typical pharmacy, a 15,000 square foot retail structure, it would mean a deferment of $53,000 for the time of construction. We believe this will also encourage commercial and industrial developments, which brings jobs to our community and also sales tax to our city. There are additional impact fees that are paid by developers beyond those collected by the city. In fact, for a typical house, only 25% of the total fees go to the city, 75% go to other agencies. We have initiated conversations with some of these other agencies to push them to similarly adopt an impact fee reduction during this difficult time. It would be helpful to be able to say that they should match what the city is already doing. I, I feel that others, other agencies benefit by the incentive program. For instance, schools could benefit by higher enrollments in a time when enrollment is down. For a fire and sheriff, it, it may mean last service calls. If we can get the support of other agencies and we move forward with our own program, I believe there's going to be enough of an incentive to encourage a kickstart to construction in our housing area. I'm not sure whether Tom DePrima is here. He had, I had thought that he might be, and if he is, with your permission, I would, I would have, I would ask him to let you know from a developer's perspective what this kind of program means.
Come on up, Tom.
After Tom's presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Well, I think we've had an opportunity to see a couple of these projects come to fruition and be built, and we have a lot of testimonials from the neighbors in these communities that were happy to see us come in. Many of these communities have structures that were started. Those structures endured a lot of vandalism, which was putting a lot of demand on the sheriff's services. There were fires in these units from some of the vandalism and was putting a demand to the point when, as we started to take over some of these properties, when we called to let them know we were taking over the properties, they knew them by name, they knew the addresses, they knew everything about them. I almost had the sheriff's service officer give me a hug in the street because they were excited to see the properties taken over, cleaned up, and move forward. As you know, the stimulus is, is 25% of about $10,000 to $11,000. It doesn't begin to cover some of the costs in repairing some of these structures. There are a lot of hidden things. We've found concrete dumped in the pipes and things where we've had to go in and repair in order to bring the homes up to satisfactory conditions. Additionally, we, we've gone through and adopted all the current building codes. So everything going forward on all new construction in these communities is being built at the new current code. Many of them are now having fire sprinklers installed. So we're, we've taken into account, some of that offset is helping cover some of the new costs that have come into construction, building to the new universal building code. So it's, it really stimulates to the point where it makes these projects viable. Many of these projects, when we do due diligence and look to acquire them, they're at a net, net zero residual, and it provides enough incentive back to the seller in order to make it viable for many of these banks to turn these properties over. It's generating tax dollars, and statistically, if you look at some of the statistics from the Building Industry Association, every new home produces between five and seven new jobs. So it's helping put new jobs into the community, and I think it's great. I think if you see some of these communities finished out, we've definitely taken care of problems. There are some other problems in some of these communities that were started and stopped. When sewer and water and things are put into these communities, oftentimes they're looped. So in the event of an outage at one end, you can backfeed the service. If, in these cases where Southern California Edison has gone in and put utilities in, their streetlights in, they're running, we've had cases where they've come in and tried to steal the wire out of the ground, and they've cut off the system, leaving the homeowners in the dark for many days, not just a short hour or two outage, because there's no way to loop the system back because the system wasn't completed. Same fourth, where they've come in and backed into the fire hydrants to steal the brass out of the fire hydrants, and there's no way to shut the system off to keep the homeowners to have water while we're trying to get the fire hydrant fixed. So by coming in and completing these, we're taking some of those problems away. So as you can imagine, if you're a homeowner and bought a home in one of these communities, and these challenges are coming on a weekly and monthly basis, they're very grateful to see us come in, complete these communities. And as you know, we've even taken advantage of this program to introduce some new solar projects and, and bring some sustainability. All our homes that we're currently building, we're building to the Energy Star certification. So we're building those homes at 15% beyond the standard minimum requirement for energy conservation. When you add in a solar, basic solar system into those, you're reducing the cost of the backend payment to the homeowner by nearly $100. All this has gone forward, and thanks to this program, and we'd like to see it continue, we thank you for the support of the program. We know it's, when we presented the idea with the city the first time, our permit numbers were at a record low, and we were able to get three or 400 homes going, which was beneficial from both ends. I can tell you from working in, from basically Chula Vista to, to Achby is our territory, which is quite large nowadays. We have several cities that have adopted this program, and they seem to be the cities that are thriving the best, and other cities are in the process of raising fees, and we are not buying anything in those communities because they just don't pencil. So 10% more of nothing is still nothing, and I think this has been a win-win for everybody. So I thank you for the help with this program, and I would encourage the council to vote in favor of continuing.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Marta Golding-Brown. I am the Director of the Antelope Valley Office of the Building Industry Association, the Los Angeles Ventura Chapter. Say that three times fast. I'm here to say thank you, hopefully with approval of this item and the support of the stimulus program for another year. It helps the industry and the subcontractors, everyone involved in building a house, to keep, keep the industry moving and keep the city moving forward. We've spoken with Robert Neal about these programs and others, and he's been assisting us with the other agencies, and we just want to go on record that we support this stimulus program advancement and to thank you for your support of the industry. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Reeves?
Well, I'm, Councilman, Mr. Mayor, I'm speaking in opposition to the stimulus program. First of all, we're going to have a fee increase for homeowners, and now you're asking me, as a homeowner, to support giving developers $2,800 a home reduction in fees. No, I, this is the wrong time, the wrong place. And furthermore, in the resolution, it says that for existing tracts, 25% of the development impact fees will be waived, and landscaping will not be required in the backyard. So all this talk about cleaning up the houses and fixing up the neighborhoods, but yet you don't have to do any landscaping in the back. So if somebody buys the house, they're going to buy a house that's going to need thousands of dollars in the landscaping in the back. This is the wrong time for the wrong program. Besides, I would want to see specifically, specifically what neighborhoods and what developers that are going to use this program before I even consider it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. David G.
It's funny how I filled out a speaker's card for this item and not the one before it, because I remember filling out the one before it. So I think you're lying. Yeah. I don't, you know, when have a stimulus package worked, you know, program worked? It didn't work for the United States, right? Bankers, bailed out the bankers, bailed out everybody. It's not working for us. Our economy's still tanking. This gentleman, Michael Reeves, he's, he's on it, on everything. And when he talks about the state, maybe not you bringing in extra prisoners to this, to the city, he means the people that, you know, make those decisions. So this man right here, he knows what he's talking about, and every time he comes up here, people like to belittle him or not even pay attention, and he does a way better job than I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move that we adopt resolution number 11 dash 61.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. Moving on to new business item three, I've decided to take that off the agenda. Apparently, there is a difference of opinion between various attorneys as to the appropriateness of it. And, and so I'd like that discussion to go forward before it's brought back to us. All right. Thank you. Moving on to council agenda item number one. Do I need a motion for this? You do? Okay. Well, obviously, there's been a discussion lately about local vendors, and as, as I was listening to Michael Reeves tonight, it occurred to me that it's more than just encouraging the joint powers to, to insist on local vendors. I think what we ought to do is we ought to have an explanation as to why local vendors aren't used from now on, which I think would, for both the city and, and I would encourage everybody on the various joint powers to adopt a similar, similar rule. I, I don't think we need a motion in regards to that. It's just a direction. Okay? From now on, if we don't use a local vendor, when local vendors are, are available, I want an explanation as to why not, and I would suggest that all of you who sit on various boards insist on the same. I don't think that requires a motion. Does it? It's a direction. I'm sorry.
No, that's, that's a direction. That's, it doesn't require a motion.
Okay, good. But I'll be happy to call the speaker cards. Michael Reeves?
Well, this is one thing I can support, the use of local vendors. And I'd like the council to add an addendum to that motion to encourage local businesses to patronize local businesses. I am the president-elect of the Optimist Club of Antelope Valley, and I take office in October. And when I take office in October, I'm going to reach out to the other service clubs in the Antelope Valley, and we're going to compose a bulletin like we have for Sacred Heart Church, and we're going to list all the businesses of all the service clubs in the Antelope Valley, and we're going to encourage the businesses in the Antelope Valley to patronize their fellow businessmen and businesswomen. And I would hope that the council would add an addendum to this resolution about encouraging public agencies to use local vendors to also encourage local businessmen to patronize the businesses in the Antelope Valley. Thank you very much.
Thank you. David G.
If I may be so bold in, in to ask you a question about local vendors, like, say, people that do construction, like SolarCity, if SolarCity came in here using a local vendor, would be our local construction crew, like, to construct the solar panels that were out in the city? Would that be a local vendor? Of course not.
This is not the time to, to address questions to the council.
I can ask questions, sir.
It's the time to make.
I can ask questions.
You certainly can, but if you're addressing it, if you're addressing it to me, I'm not going to answer it now. If you want to, if you want to call me during the week and have any questions answered, feel free to do so, but this is not a time for us to answer your questions.
You don't want to, you don't want to answer a question in front of everybody? So now is the best time. 80% of the construction force for SolarCity is outsourced, okay? 20% are temporary workers, only temporary. So if there's a SolarCity guy in here, or I seen him walking around, I asked him a couple of questions. So, you know, there's no jobs. Now, when you bring in these other companies, are they going to do the same thing? Is it going to be outsourced? You know, you might have a discussion, but what good is a discussion? Why don't you implement rules? Only use local vendors. Only use people from the city. Otherwise, you can't have any contracts in our city. I think our city could agree to that because we need jobs here. Okay? I'll come up here, I'll play the fool, but some people that are credible to come up here will come up here, and will do a better job than I can. And I would appreciate local vendors. I would appreciate having some kind of apprenticeship program, so that way I don't have to go to school, to UAV, and get into debt to go work on these solar farms. Or is that another agenda that somebody has planned in order to collect more money, whichever way they can? Stuff like that does concern me. Concerns everybody here. And the way you guys are consolidating everything in the city freaks me out. So, you know, have a good day.
Nothing to act on. City manager?
Yes. I have four, hopefully, quick ones. First off, I would really encourage those in the community that haven't been to the farmer's market to come down on Thursday afternoon and evening to Lancaster Boulevard. It was incredibly invigorating. I think people would really have a good time if they brought their families down. We had a great crowd last time. I know we'll expect a bigger one this time. The, we also have scheduled for August 2nd at Pierre Bane Park, a public safety fair and emergency exposition. 2 at Pierre Bane Park, a public safety fair and emergency exposition. The fire department, our city staff, and the sheriff's department put a lot of work into that. It's going to be a great event. You're going to have opportunities to learn about emergency preparedness, buy materials and supplies at a discount, et cetera. We publicized it, and we'll be getting with the Valley Press as well to publicize it. So that's a really good event. And we will have some initial recommendations for you on the whole state steal of redevelopment funds at your next meeting in August. We're putting those together. Thank you.
Thank you. Council reports. Marvin Christ.
ABTA, the union for the drivers have voted to go on strike. They will not tell anyone when they're going to go on strike. So I would like to tell, because school starts and the seniors sometimes wait months for their appointments, that they might want to seek secondary or backup activities for that, because the union won't tell us when they're going to go on strike, or we can't help them. They're looking at the different bus routes throughout the Antelope Valley, Bus Route 8 and Bus Route 12 to look at. They're looking at making Bus Route 8 converge with 12, and then eliminate Bus Route 8 altogether. But they're going to take a look at it and work with the University of Antelope Valley and the college and SOAR with the high schools. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Smith?
Yeah, staff has included a report that most of the actions at the last meeting was perfunctory. We're still working on assessing the real usage of some of the local restaurants to see what they should be charged.
Thank you. Lancaster Financing Authority, there's no action. City Clerk?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for you to address the city council and the redevelopment agency on any items that are not on the agenda. You'll find speaker cards at the back of the council chambers. We respectfully request that you fill them out completely and precisely, so that in case the city council, city manager, or staff would like to get ahold of you, they will have your information. As much as we appreciate your request to make comments before your three minutes begin, please understand your time begins when you, your name is called. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. If you choose to ask a question during this time, any response by council will not extend your three minutes. When you approach the podium, you'll see three lights. The green light comes on when your time begins. The yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds remaining, and the red light comes on when your time is up. We ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well. Following this procedure will allow for a smooth and timely process for the meeting. State law does prohibit the city council from taking action on items that are not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Thank you. David Raheda. David Raheda. Darlene Peterson.
I'd like to read this to you, hopefully, fast. Upon driving the Boulevard many times since its reincarnation, I couldn't put my finger on what it reminded me of. Then it came to me with the abundance of flax, as I call it, swaying in the breeze from one end of the Boulevard to the other. I felt like I was driving through a wheat field. As of this morning, I looked, it looked like it was ready to harvest. This is what it is shedding. The next time you drive the Boulevard, notice that there are also regular trees, palm trees, white roses, as well as dozens of green plants, shrubs, and trees on the curbsides, and occasionally along the route, a speck of blue and pink, but no real color to speak of. In my opinion, the Boulevard landscaping needs a wake-up call to color. In other words, some plant pizzazz, which requires planning ahead. For example, during the poppy season and festival, poppies should be blooming on the Boulevard. Poppy seeds should be planted at various Boulevard locations, and the blooms will be in conjunction with the poppy festival. Wouldn't that be nice? These are wild poppy seeds that I will leave with the city as our starter set of seeds. I'm sure the mayor and the city manager will happily plant them personally. We are now in the hot month of July, and one of the few things in bloom around town are crepe myrtles. Pruned and grown as small trees, they would be beautiful on the Boulevard, as well as fruitless plum trees. White roses should be replaced with a red variety. Purple nyrum burgia is a 12-inch bush-type plant loaded with small purple flowers. It is a hardy perennial that does well in Lancaster and blooms all summer long. Yellow and orange colors should be avoided because of the resemblance to the sun. Blues, purples, and pinks mixed with whites give a cooling effect, which we need during the summer. A 4th of July color scheme of flowers could be in bloom in some of the planters on the Boulevard in a week or two before the 4th. There are many colorful perennial flowers that could be utilized on the Boulevard if given some thought. Ask yourself this: Do you want a bright, beautiful Boulevard, or a bland Boulevard? Plan and plant now for next spring. Thank you.
Thank you, Darlene. Nan Dillinger. Good evening.
Good evening. I do realize no action will be taken tonight. However, before the matter of horse carriages rises again, many in Lancaster felt I should impart the following information as soon as possible. I've met with the local heads of the fire and sheriff's departments. I cannot speak for them, but I can say the proposed ordinance 965 presents major obstacles for emergency services. I spoke with the heads of animal control. This presents a great burden for them as far as enforcement, as well as dead horse removal, should that happen. None of the above agencies, nor the business people, can understand why one person's request to do business, opening a huge can of worms, is even being considered. When I sat down with Mr. Ortega, President of the Chamber of Commerce, he urged me to make you aware that in monitoring the Internet, I am finding the out-of-work drivers in Reno and Las Vegas where carriages are banned discussing coming here, as they can't sell their carriages in this economy. Unlike Ms. Whitmer, these drivers are viewed as riffraff, gypsies, et cetera. They will be able to qualify for licenses, but when they see there's no call for carriages, they may become a drain on social services and low-income housing. It will not be just Ms. Whitmer on the Boulevard. Mr. Ortega divulged he polled approximately 625 chamber members, many of whom are acquainted with the Whitmers. Only 24 replied, 13 in favor. Thirteen of 625 is not representative. I personally visited the businesses on the Boulevard and spoke to the operators and some patrons. The only ones who wouldn't sign my simple petition opposing the ordinance were people whose businesses the Whitmers patronize, though all but one of those vocalized their opposition. Much of the real estate is taken out by banks, the post office, et cetera, but in my limited canvassing, the people on the Boulevard are overwhelmingly against this with few exceptions, mainly because of traffic, the risks of injury, and the smell. Two business operators said they'd yelled at a lady, I assume to be Ms. Whitmer, to clean up the poop, but she did not. So once again, I ask you to weigh the risks of injury, property damage, and, God forbid, death against the desire of one person. Here is my petition of 102 signatures and news articles for you to consider, including the cost of annual asphalt replacement from wheels and urine, as well as cleanup, which alone runs $165,000 in Charleston, which is where this ordinance was taken from. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If you could hand it to Mr. Liddick. Thank you. Maria Elena Gredo? Gredo? Gredo, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, city council members and city staff, five years ago, November 6, 2006, I opened The Lemon Leaf in Lancaster with the intention of starting a national brand. I started in Lancaster because I believed this community was the perfect location with a target market and a viable workforce needed to launch my national brand. After 10 years as a costume designer in Hollywood, I came back to start a business where I grew up. My mother and my grandmother were born, and where I, my, where I remembered a vital business community where my grandfather and my father took risk to start business. I chose Lancaster Boulevard with the vision of the revitalization that has occurred today. My vision was, if I proved a business succeeded in an area as this, that other entrepreneurs would take the expensive risk and do the same. The Lemon Leaf mission is and has been to serve clean, fresh food, food that hopefully will make a difference in people's healthy lifestyles toward a common goal, free of heart disease, cancer, autism, ADD, and allergies. With this said, and the challenges and growing pains of redevelopment, I am here to thank you for the beautiful Lancaster Boulevard destination. I didn't think I was going to get emotional, but I want to say thank you for your leadership and your vision. And thank you for the farmer's market. I know I'm speaking on behalf of many other businesses on the Boulevard. And to be honest, there were days that during the construction, I didn't know if The Lemon Leaf was going to survive. It took partnerships and negotiations with the bank vendors and other businesses, and we managed to stay open. With change as controversy, but I commend your actions in making decisions which create change. It is important that I tell my story. And when I opened The Lemon Leaf, Lancaster Boulevard was desolate, and it was crime-infested. I think it's important for the community to understand that I am the sole owner of The Lemon Leaf, that I'm an independent business, and I finance the business myself, and that, that this business opportunity, that everybody in Lancaster has the same opportunity. And The Lemon Leaf has survived because of sweat equity. And the reason I'm here talking about this is that I'm really grateful for all the change that's been happening, the solar, the wellness centers. And with that said, a lot of my employees use those wellness centers. That's what we're here for. That's this positive that's been happening. Now, the farmer's market is positive for all the businesses on the Boulevard. So, like I said, with growing, you're going to have growing pains with change and redevelopment, and I just want to say thank you very much.
Thank you. Blair Brooks.
Evening, guys. Okay, there's a company called Desert Sky, and they're running their business out of their home and out at the 45029 Trevor. I don't think that's right, and I think they need to, you know, step to their plate like they're supposed to. And they haven't done that. So, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Turn it over to Code Enforcement.
Yes, Barbara's written the address down, and we'll get someone out there right away.
Thank you. David Paul.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, good evening. I didn't know what I was going to talk about. I just wanted to say to Mr. Neal, Public Works Project, stimulus sounds like a great thing. It sounds like it's working. Thank you for that. The Joint Powers with the Fairground, that's a wonderful opportunity, and we can make that whatever we want. And the last thing I'll say is that Saturday, I went to a wellness conference, a Living with Purpose Conference at the University of Antelope Valley. It was a women's conference, and it was a fun time for me. And I was impressed by the fact that our Congressman McCarthy and McKinnon both flew from Washington to attend that and fulfilled their commitment and then flew back to take care of resolving this budget debt crisis. Anyway, God bless y'all. We're doing great things here, and I just wanted to get up here and say a couple of good things. Thank you.
I was expecting you to talk longer. Teresa Malone.
First off, for somebody in my condition, the marquis de Sade designed these chairs, because now my back's spasming too. Before I get to what I plan to say, an ice cube on top of the seeds in November, quarter inch of soil, that you have to have them frozen for them to germinate in the spring. The only reason my yard was full of poppies is because we had snow.
That's why my poppies never grow.
Yes. And if you want to do it at home, put half of the ice cube tray, just fill it halfway, seeds, freeze it, fill it the rest of the way, and then just go plant the ice cube.
I'll do that. Thank you.
That's all the water they need. They don't need much water.
Restart your time.
The, I know this probably isn't the proper place, but I just saw it today while I was channel surfing at the Planning Commission meeting, that the artist's rendering of the alternative energy at the wildlife preserve had horizontal-axis wind turbines that not only make a great deal of noise, but they kill birds. Granted, not as many as cars, but they kill birds. Is this what we want in the wildlife preserve, or do we want horizontal-axis turbines that birds can see and avoid, and will create just as much power? There are several companies around the state, around the country, in North America, and if you have to, there are even some in China, that will do this. And we can have local contractors pouring the cement for the foundations. We can use American steel and aluminum for the poles, and American workforces building the turbines here. And the other thing that I noticed on the way in, I hadn't realized that you'd put the solar panels all over the parking lot. Rain gutters? Rain gutters? Really? When it rains, it pours, especially here. And people walk into their cars, they're going to get wet, even though there's...
That is a good point.
Thank you for restarting my time.
Thank you. Vernon, I'm having trouble pronouncing your last name.
Fury.
Fury? Thank you.
My name is Vernon Fury. I live in Lancaster. Mayor of Paris, Vice Mayor Smith, council members, and especially city staff, a belated thank you for what you have done for Lancaster. It's been a real challenge. While I've been out, I've been writing newspapers on that. The reason I was here is, when I was in Antelope Valley Care Center, there was a gentleman that took care of my dressings. He was born in Kenya, Africa. His native tongue were two tribal languages. He came with all the new family. He learned English in Africa. He was 28 years old. He decided to become a citizen. I had the privilege to shake his hand. He became a citizen this year, 20 years later. The lady signed me up for Medicare. She's Irish. This, last April, in nine months, she would become a citizen. She'd go back to Ireland. Every time she came back, she had to reapply for citizenship. I had to, I congratulate her, because this year she would become a citizen. The reason I bring this up is, it's a shame that our congressmen and senators do not do something about the legal alien situation. It's an insult to citizens that come here the right way. I ask and encourage and demand you that you continue to see that they do something about the illegal alien system. And no, I am not racist. I'm not against legal citizens being here, regardless of what their ethnic background is. Thank you.
Thank you, Vernon. Marina Crockett.
Mayor, city council members, I'm here to talk about the horse carriages, that you, the ordinance. I have accompanied Ms. Dillinger talking to businesses and residents, and I can confirm, after speaking to the residents and the business owners along Lancaster Boulevard, that they are opposed to it. They complained about the traffic, the congestion, the narrow streets. They complained about the traffic, the congestion, the narrow streets. I think this is something that I'm asking you guys have a conscience and use your common sense, listen to your residents, listen to your business owners, and opposed to it, not do it. I can suggest using petty taxis. I know you've seen them in other cities. It's like a half bicycle with like a little, like, maybe it could hold like four people in the back. It adds more festive. You could hire local bicyclists. You don't have to worry about lawsuits if there's car accidents or accidents from the horses or any of that. And you mentioned the farmer's market, how wonderful and busy it is, and how everyone has a good time, and I just can't see the horse carriages adding so much festivity to that because it's just going to clog up your narrow Lancaster Boulevard street. So, with that said, I ask that you do listen to your residents, listen to your business owners, and look at your streets. I mean, I drive a Prius, and I feel like I'm going to scrape the doors from all the cars parked down there, and I just think it's a bad decision for economically, in case there's lawsuits or anything. So I ask that you look into petty taxis and oppose the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Burgess.
I've missed you. Where have you been?
Vice Mayor.
Haven't seen you in months.
Keep a low profile, right? Council members, concerning the property at 45416 Samcroft, last year after numerous code violations were ignored, the city proceeded to abate this property. This caused the resident to be removed from his home, and the city, per proper procedures, cleaned up the debris, removed the vehicles that were in violation of city ordinances, and stepped in to landscape the property. Notices were put on the front door that stayed the house was not to be occupied from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. This property, as of this afternoon, is in as great a violation of city ordinances that it was before the city abated the property. I found out today the city is in the process of obtaining another warrant abatement to bring the property into compliance once again. From the point onward when the property was abated last year, a few of us, as good neighbors and a friend of the property owner, have kept an eye on the property. We have reported to the owner's daughter the broken windows, chased individuals off the property as they were in the process of carrying off items, secured his garage to prevent access by thieves, confronted persons loading up personal property and causing them to take the property from their vehicle. The latest occurrence was this past Sunday, when I confronted two adult males and requested they leave the property and to unload what they had already put in their automobile. I called the sheriff department, and a deputy was dispatched to my home so that I could file a report on the incident. I was told that there was no crime committed against me, so I wouldn't be able to file a report. I suggested that these criminal acts against another property were, in my opinion, crimes against the neighborhood. It was explained to me there was nothing that the sheriff department could do in situations such as this, but we should call in when we see individuals that are committing a criminal act such as stealing. We all know that due to priorities, a deputy most likely will not arrive in time to catch someone in the act of something as a simple theft from a property. Even in these difficult economic times, there has to be a tool that we can use in the neighborhood to prevent properties from reaching a state of disrepair that attracts a criminal element. After being very active for over 10 years with the Neighborhood Watch Program, a volunteer at the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, and a concerned citizen to make Lancaster a safer and better place to reside, I am slowly coming to the conclusion that we, as citizens, have our hands tied to a great extent when it comes to fighting crime in our neighborhoods. I ask you, Mayor Perez, and council members, give us some additional effective tools that we can use to keep our streets and homes safer. Thank you.
Thank you. What's the response time on Part 1 crimes? Emergencies like 4.9 minutes or 5.2 minutes?
Yeah. I just want to say, and I know I'm over the limit, so toss me, but I'm not here to speak out against the sheriff department. I understand a lot that goes on, but in all reality, it's almost, you can't have a policeman on every corner, you know? And so I'm not complaining about the response time of the sheriff department. They're extra good. I mean, this guy got out, this deputy came out within 30 minutes, you know, which is great, you know, for what it was. So my complaint is just these people picking in the neighborhood, and me as a citizen, I don't really feel I have the tools to keep them off my street. So, thank you.
Gary, if it was me, I'd be issuing handguns. The, I mean, if I had the ability to, seriously. I think everybody should have a gun permit who's, you know, hasn't committed a crime over 25, but that's just me. The, find out why that wasn't handled as a burglary, would you?
Yeah, I will. We have it written down, and we'll find out, and we'll report back to council.
Also, look into why they can't file a police report. I don't, that doesn't, makes no sense to me.
We'll look into that one. Mr. Burgess has been talking to our code enforcement folks, but we'll get him with the sheriff's department and our public safety office when we get to the bottom of it.
Okay, thank you. As to the response time for Part 1 crimes, you know, the standard is six minutes if you want apprehension. If we can get there within six minutes, there's a pretty good likelihood of apprehension. So as long as we're under that, I'm encouraged. But obviously, they didn't treat it as a Part 1 crime. Okay? Thank you.
It could be due to the way I reported it, you know, why I was requesting service, you know? But my point is, it's not about the sheriff's department or response time at all, or about the city, the code enforcement here. They do a great job, and they use all the tools that are at their disposal, and they do a great job here in the city. It's just that the bureaucracy, this is my frustration, the bureaucracy keeps us citizens nailed down where we can't, we can't do anything, you know? And we need some kind of tool because, and I know better than, and know not to go out there and confront somebody, taking their picture, putting them on a video recorder, telling them I'm going to call the sheriff department right then. I know better than that, but still, yet, I'm not going to sit in the house and watch these things go on, so.
I'm going to look into it, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia Spears.
Good afternoon, council, Mayor Perez. I'm back here for the fourth time, and I'll just go down my list here. Back, I'm, actually, I'm Cynthia Spears, Executive Director, Change Lanes Youth Support Services. Back in October of 2010, the agency submitted a proposal to receive community development block grant funding to help support our agency. We did not get a response to that request. On January 25, 2011, we were here speaking before the council. We did not get much feedback. On 2/17, I met with Lee DeRico and Lieutenant Downton, who's no longer with the Lancaster Sheriff Department. Lieutenant Downton requested statistics from our agency, which I provided for him, and I do have on a disc if you need to see it this evening. After that, there was not much done. On April 12, we met again with the city council with no response, and on July 5, we met with the Neighborhood Revitalization Committee Commission, and we were referred back to the city council. Change Lanes is here because we are in need of support. It's been mentioned on many occasions here at Lancaster City Hall in particular that we are a Christian-centered community. We received prayer at the beginning of the meeting, and obviously, there are many Christians in our community, and I believe that Christians should show their true nature through their actions. Matthew, Chapter 7, verse 8 says, "Asking, it shall be given to you; seeking, ye shall find; knocking, it shall be opened unto you. For everyone that asks is receiveth; he that seeketh, findeth; and to him that knocketh, it shall be opened." Change Lanes is asking for immediate and serious consideration be given to our agency. We are requesting federal funding. Change Lanes is not asking the city council nor the revitalization committee to come out of their pockets in helping to sustain our agency. We are asking that someone on the board of directors, someone on the city council that's able to make a decision, sit down, listen to our concerns, see how we benefit the community, see how we aid in reducing crime, increasing safety, and making our community a better place for all involved. Today, I'll be providing each city council member with a proposal requesting community development block grant funding or off-cycle funding to assist our agency in this time of difficult economic need. We also have a video, so you can see exactly what Change Lanes does. This video was made in October of 2007 in reference to us working with Pepperdine University and taking the kids out there, and we, since then, continue to carry on this process as well as engaging our youth in positive behaviors and redirecting them so that they can be productive members in our community. If it's okay with the board, I can give you some statistics if you want them now, or I can provide them to you later. I have them on a USB drive. I could plug it in and show it to you. But we need support, we need an answer, and we need a meeting.
If you put it on a disc, it'll be distributed to each of us, and we can look at it, and then we'll go from there, okay?
Very good. Can I pass everyone a...
Hand that to the city manager, and he'll distribute it to us, okay?
Okay. Time is of the essence, Mayor. We need an answer by the end of the month, and like I stated earlier, this process has been going on since October of 2010. City manager.
Right there. Any comments from the city council before we go into closed session? All right, we'll now recess to closed session for the matters listed on the agenda.
I feel like...
Okay, we're back in session.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the city council met in closed session under Government Code Section 54956.9A concerning an existing litigation. Rubin versus City of Lancaster gave direction to council concerning handling of the future steps on the appeal, if should there be an appeal. The Lancaster versus Sioux case gave direction to council concerning handling that matter, and also on the Bogos versus City of Lancaster gave direction to council to pursue the defense of that matter.
Thank you. Well, now, we are adjourned, and anything anybody else said? Okay. We are adjourned until Tuesday, August 9, 2011, at 5:00 PM.